Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the city council meeting to order. I'd like to first ask everyone to stand and join in the reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kevin, can we please do roll call?
Jenny Bowers School.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fullkin.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Abby Wilder.
Here.
Okay, we do have two public hearings that we have to have at 7 o'clock, so we're gonna try to get some of the other agenda items off first. Jamie, do you want to talk about the mural or the road closing?
Yes. I'll do the minutes.
Oh, sorry. Was anyone given a chance to review the minutes from the October 1st meeting?
Make a motion to accept them as emailed.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Thank you, Barbara.
Alright, so I have a request to close Second Street this Sunday, October 20th. It's from Decatur Main Street. It's to paint over, well, to touch up the mural that's on Second Street between Sherwin-Williams and Davis-Moore Street.
Uh huh.
We've had to paint for a while, and now we have someone that's willing to paint the same thing over, so just asking to close that for a couple hours on Sunday.
It hasn't been there that long.
No, so the original artist, she said that since it was the first thing that had been painted there, that first one wouldn't last as long, but the second coat will last longer.
Yeah.
Because it's been like a year and a half, but it's been there now, and it's really faded.
It's probably not that long.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion approved. Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, thank you. You want to stay up here with Michelle?
Yeah.
Okay. Michelle's here from Senior Center.
Wherever.
Adam Kelly called the transport, whatever else hat she wears.
I got mine. I got mine. Okay, so I am here to ask to see, you guys notice on that packet, there's a before and after picture of the courtyard at the Merritt Center. The weeds were as tall as me, I know I'm short because they were pretty tall, and then you can look on the right side. Yesterday, I had 20 volunteers from four different banks come and help clean that out. This is a blessing. The two trees that are remaining, one of them is a memorial tree, and I was able to figure out who, and I've gotten permission, that tree has kind of grown all wonky, to remove it and replace it with something else. It was in honor of Matt Brown, who died in 87, riding his bike right outside of school. Another student that went to school there passed away in 2016, and his name was Jane Myers, so I also made a plaque for him, and we'll have some to memorial him, so I'm taking care of the sentimental value. But to gain access to that courtyard, you either have to go through the boiler room, which is scary, or go at the back gate. So what I'm asking is, if you notice on the bottom, I took a picture of the two windows that I have state designer leads for already, and to install these storefront doors in its place, when I met with Kurt, was there years ago when I started this, it made more sense financially to utilize the window space that was already cut open, that already was supported with that, than to create just one door in the center of the wall. So, if you notice on the middle of that front face, those are kind of like the initial drawings, initial ideas for the courtyard, if we're able to renovate it. It would all be wheelchair, walker accessible, shuffleboard sports, things like that, but we just need to have access to it. There's really no good access, and dragging people through the boiler room really isn't a great option. So, my question to you would be, it's been a couple years since I got quotes, so I got refreshed quotes, and they are definitely higher than they were two years ago. I got two different quotes, one from Miguel Juarez, to replace and put two doors in, was 13,000, this one door was 7,200. Tyler gave me some quotes too, this, for the two doors, was 19,860. I'm hopeful that there would be some fun somewhere, that we could please put the doors, that way, that would step in renovating that courtyard and utilizing all that space that's there. If you go to the page, it looks like this, I just did a collaborative grant with the Merritt Center coordinator, and pretty much intention to my planners for out there, and to make three wheelchair accessible race gardens that we're gonna have classes, so despite being limited, and it's not quite what we're looking for, I would like to continue to move forward with it and slow and steady get that courtyard so where it's useful again. So cool, yesterday, one of the volunteers that came, was Mrs. Tring, and she was a church there for 30 years, and when she came out there, they told her to find me, so she came and found me, covered and drank, and she was crying because of how the state of design that the courtyard was in, and I said, I promise, this is gonna get so much better. Like, she was worried about the memorial tree and everything, but I think there's a lot of investment from all the students that were in and out of that courtyard for a few years, that they just want to have some doors to be able to get out there and utilize it more. I talked with Jeremy earlier, and since we were able to cut all the weeds down, I mean, we've done this however many times, the city's done it, the football team's done it, since we were able to talk about maybe doing roundup and putting some glass down so that we're gonna get this under control, so it's not starting at five foot weeds every time. So my plea to you would be, can we please get some doors, if you guys have some money, that way you can have access to that courtyard, and then we can continue to grow the space and utilize it. The collaboration that we did a couple years ago with the addition of the restroom, we edited an impact grant, you guys pitched in, and I got the grant, that's made the biggest impact, and we're the eliminated activists, which no one wants that at any age, so I would love to be able to partner again and make some adjustments.
How much foot traffic are you seeing in there?
Every day. We've got cards twice a week, we've got bingo once a month, we've got artists every week, I mean, I don't know, probably 10 to 20 a day, people coming in and out, walking the hall most of the time, playing cards, hanging out, shooting pool, they've got pool every day. We've got drop desks and school tables in there, and I've got his football and baseball numbers on the end, so.
Do you need two doors? Is that recommended, or is that?
I'd just like to, as far as to be able to exit out of the senior center, and not really, if you think about the clientele that are in there during the day, they're gonna be limited anyways on how fast they can move, so if we could have two doors to be able to exit. We could do one, I think it would be asymmetrical, and I think it would be awkward. I was kind of hoping to be able to have those storefront doors so that no one gets hit by a door, and falls and breaks something, just to have some exit and entry. If anything, I'll take one. I would love, if they're there doing the work, to do two, but I don't know how much, what do you guys have?
Michelle, is this estimate for Miguel, the 13,000, is that the total?
Yeah.
For both doors, okay.
Yeah, that's for two doors, that's for one door.
And they're all wide enough for wheelchairs?
Yeah.
The doors?
Yeah, and they're all insulated, so.
And you already have a state release for this project, right?
Yes, and Kurt, he had me a blessing on it, so.
Biggest challenge right there.
Well, I know my kids and I did bingo out there a while back, the center. There was like 60 people in there, I could not believe it, and it was crowded in that space there, and I just, I love the idea of giving, giving those people like a space to go out and be with nature and flowers and all of that, a safe place in the building, and Michelle's done so much work to utilize, you know, to be able to utilize that space, like it's so valuable. I know, two doors, one door, I don't know.
It's just the right.
I think this, the second door, the Miguel project is a double door though, right? Two swinging doors?
Or...
Yeah, it's like two 3-0 doors, so you still have access for both points.
I think it would be fun to have, you know, if we were able to get the pair of doors in, to have them open, and then have an event where people can be outside and inside. The question was, we're getting bigger with bingo, I mean, our capacity on the inside is about six feet, which is so cool, because when we started bingo, and it's three years ago, we had 12. So, pre-COVID, we had 80, so we are getting it slow and steady, I would love to know where it's going to be at as well. Now, this is with 12 inch sidelines, so it's one door with 12 inch sidelines, and there's two of them like that.
I think the first quote it did, but I think the second quote it says a 6-0, so that would be a double door.
Right, if we were just gonna go one door. I see what you're saying, sorry.
I guess I'm just in favor of a single door, but I mean, I mean, a single unit, two doors on there swinging both ways, or one way allows them to get out, you just feel a lot of labor involved knocking out brick, and...
Much nicer.
I mean, your drawing, the drawing that you have of it basically only adds a set of doors.
If we were to just do one door with two, which side would you put it on, the left or the right?
I don't think it would really matter. I think they're, they actually probably both have to swing out, technically.
No, I mean, like, would you replace the left or the right windows? Like, that's the thing I was running out, like, I don't, I don't know if it's gonna look lost, I didn't...
More of like aesthetics and symmetry.
Yeah, because I was, when I was gonna revamp the plans for the courtyard, I actually contacted, I was gonna see if Mr. Hunter would work with me with the kids to revamp it, to have a wheelchair ramp on both sides. I guess that's kind of how I was thinking with the two as well, is if you've got people in wheelchairs trying to get out, and you've got 50 other people not in wheelchairs, I don't know. That's the kind of thing, I wear those old seats on my feet, so I don't, that's what I'm thinking.
I could see a struggle of getting people in wheelchairs in the side-by-side door, because they'll be clogged up on the outside.
Yeah.
Give them fan, trying to get in, if you have one, one lane, if you have people that could come, there's, it's just a lot of work.
Right, neither one lane, but if it was to be a, there is an option where it's two doors.
Yeah.
If single door option, you'd have a door on this side and a side in the single open.
I was just saying, like, you'd have everybody coming still in the same point to get there. This way, you're coming into a different point.
Well, I don't think the worry would be rushing in.
Yeah.
I think there's more to rushing out, but... Is there a metal stop on those doors? No, it would open, it's a full six foot. You'd actually get, with a double door, you'd get more opening space, as far as if you did want to open up the doors to the outside, because that door would be propped open.
He said there wouldn't, there wouldn't be a...
There is an option where you could get those doors built, so they would be propped open, and you'd have six foot of clearance open, rather than where you do two singles, you'd have just three foot of open space. I don't want to worry, but...
Sorry. I will take whatever you guys think is, I just would love to be able to have access to it, and have it be easily accessed from my...
Is there a bit less, Tyler? Uh, over $1,000 left. It's 13,000 to do two singles, and then 7,000 to do a double door. So I guess it's not a huge amount difference.
A little over 5,000. I guess that would be the question, the other thing is, if you could have a double that was a six foot door, or six foot opening, would you rather have that than, because I never thought about that, I was thinking of a pole in the middle, kind of like, I think our doors out front, they both open.
The interior doors and a pole, the outside one, yeah.
Right. So you could have the option of six foot wide open, like for moving stuff in and out, rather than two three foot doors.
But we have the back gate that opens too big, like if you needed to look something in.
I'm in favor of it, I'm in favor, I think it's a great place for ARPA funds to be used. It's just which route is best, that's not, I don't know, leaning more on Tyler's...
I think Michelle has put some thought into what she knows the traffic is like in and out of this room, and how she sees it going forward, and...
When I could see if this was 4,500 dollar difference, that definitely worked a lot, that could wheel out of there better than having the two, because there's still going to be one ramp coming out of the double door. I mean, are you gonna be able to push two people in wheelchairs out at the same time? Maybe, but if they're in different, on different sides, like you don't, that's what I thought of, but I will, I'll take whatever you guys have.
I'm in favor of two doors. I think Michelle, like Abby said, Michelle knows her stuff. Michelle's proven herself over how many years of what she gets stuff done.
Mm-huh.
Yeah, so...
Like, she's frugal and prudent in what she presents, and she's done a lot for the community. I'm not opposed to the two doors, as long as the funding is there, and...
So are you making a motion? I will make a motion to grant ARPA funds to Michelle for the two-door project.
For two doors? I'll second that.
Okay, motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Thanks so much. Good shit.
Thank you for any...
The name's Scott, Scott Falconnistry, a third student injured at Northwest, he is alive and well.
One more flag.
Yeah.
Good to be home. Okay, next we have Josh, and Josh ain't here, or voting for the voting. Thank you, Michelle, thanks for what you do out there.
We do the public hearing, I have a record of publishing posters.
Why you're selling? Thank you. Just working fast, yeah. Yeah, it's not, I'm gonna hit the project, it's not...
We've been working on a building at the wastewater plant since about March. We've been working on it during rain days, wherever we had time, and just kind of pulling a little bit of money out of the, for materials we needed. Well, winter's gonna be hitting us soon, and I don't have too many rain days before it starts freezing, and we need, all we need is ceiling, I got the walls all done, I got it insulated, the walls are insulated bone, it's got batting, purlin, skins on all the walls, I rewired, rewired everything, because I had no wiring, no nothing, it was just a whole storage space, so it's 40 by 64. It'd be really useful to get that completed. I got priced here, the labor, just to put the lid on the ceiling, is only 50, 120 dollars. The rest of it's for heat, our transformer, and then de-insulation for the ceiling, and the total is 18 more degrees. Now, see if we could get our funds to finish this project before it does get full set scheduled, we could use the space.
What would you use the space for?
The back trucks, engine trucks, generator trucks, everything we need, worm?
Some of the bigger trucks that travel to store, right. He's basically taking a 40 by 64 building that was not being used, stuffing it for full storage, and making it usable to store equipment.
It really wasn't used much, but it had, it had no power, nothing. I ran gas, I ran water, power, so, it's regular old, like you had done, I have a man, so...
Previously, this was stored in the street garage.
No.
The trucks were.
Well, the camera trucks there. I think it'd be useful to use the space, you know what I mean? The building was there already, and it wasn't doing much, so we made it useful.
Is this kind of the, the building that would be on the south corner?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I mean, have the transformer being set, hopefully this week, so we get power through it. We bought that, we purchased a lot of 7,000 dollar, you had a transformer for, maybe a 750, a thousand bucks to do everything for recording. I'll restart.
What's the total asked here, I have to go right now to finish this?
18 more degrees.
Appreciate you did the portion of the project that you could do, in half way I did, but I'm not gonna have to meet any of these between, it's not even done. But it does need finished, or do whatever it is, it's not gonna be long.
Think like a good investment to protect our equipment?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to allow Josh to move forward with his project, and use our funds.
Second.
Motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, thanks, Josh. Okay, Chief Gerber, keep rolling with our fund request.
Hello? Hello? So I would like to ask for some ARPA funds to help get the new body camera program up and off the ground, and I haven't flipped to the page with the breakdown, there's pictures and breakdowns beyond that.
So a few years ago, one of the biggest issues with body cameras were the expensive storage, and so what you're seeing across the country is everyone's going to subscriptions, because cities can't hold enough storage, I mean, we don't have enough data storage to store all that camera footage, so now what's going on is a bunch of subscriptions like we've seen, so.
Hey Kevin, should you explain that?
And when I initially talked about this a few months ago, I was incorrect when I said that we don't own the equipment, we would own the equipment, that this is just a, it's breaking the cost of all of it down over a five-year period of time, and along with that, for that five years, including all the storage warranties, and then we will also be given an upgrade on the body cameras that year, although they said we're ready, there's like cell phones that are gonna be changes, and a lot of one upgrade within that. A cost associated upfront is the one highlighted at the top, and that's the 46,250 dollars, and that's on top of what I already have built into the budget for next year, to help cover the, the subscription, the annual subscription fee, is what they call it, but it's essentially just your payment plan. They will, or they said they can break that down across the five years, but then that's gonna raise the fee, the annual fee, so I'm just asking if there's any ARPA funds available to help supplement that, that way I can save that lit money that we don't have to use for this.
So the 63,000, is that due?
That'll be the annual, annual fee. So that first year, because of all the startup fees, and the training that they bring in, setting everything up, that's that 46,000.
So the 63 is what is budgeted for next year?
I have that budgeted.
Okay. So your ask from council out of ARPA funds is the 46,250 only for this?
Yeah, it's over. It's a long time to leave, uh...
In ARPA funds versus the Betty Walters funds, is that an allowable expense for that? Or are we still trying to come up with reasons to extend ARPA funds, because that was police-only expenses, but not salaries, if I understand correctly?
The Betty Walters? I think it was for any expense.
I have another plan that I would like to use that money for, for training purposes, so I'd like to not touch that.
Okay. Sometimes, what fund is, what fund is best?
That's a fair question.
It's similar with that money sitting there not being used, because it's sizable to be used.
I'll make a motion to give Kevin the ARPA funds to cover the upfront costs that he's requesting.
I'll second it.
Okay, Kevin, when, if we go ahead and agree to this, when will you be up and using body cameras in, do you know?
I was looking to get this answer, on which we were gonna go, so I can contact them, and we can do the order process, and then they'll start sending that equipment in, and then it's just getting set up, and I'm hoping by the beginning of the year, at least get the body cameras up and going. All the, all the in-car cameras are in search too, so it's gonna be kind of a, a time and process.
So are they all gonna be on the same system then?
Yeah, everything will be on the same system, so right now, officers wear body mics that are attached to the in-car system, so you get, you might be getting a front view, a front view of the car, but everything's happening over here, so you only have the audio, the microphone. The body cameras will replace that microphone, and so it'll, everything will work in sync with each other, and everything just uploads into the cloud, and still be available for everyone who needs it.
I get the grade, and it's all about liability and accountability, so...
If you, this overall cost of this entire project is a sizable amount of money, but if you break it all the way down, so what it would cost for an officer and a car per month is 300 dollars, so it's 10 dollars a day on the average day, so it's really, you look at it that way, it's, you know, reach a chief insurance policy for liability and evidence, but...
Kevin, we have a motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, thank you, Kevin. Okay, first, we need to make a matter of record that the public hearings have been advertised. So moved. Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. So I'm gonna need somebody to suspend the city council meeting, and then we're gonna enter the first public hearing, which will be on the water rates.
I'll make a motion to suspend city council meeting and enter into public hearing for water rates.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Are there supposed to be two separate motions? Close, do motion, then another second, and open? Okay, yeah, I'll get another chance. All right, we are now in our public hearing covering water rate. Those members of the public that are here and would like an opportunity to speak either in favor or opposition, when that time comes, we're gonna have members from, of our municipal advisor, Crowe, here to do an overview and summary of both the water rate and the sewer rate studies, and they'll do each of those consecutively in their respective public hearings. After that summary has been presented, if you would like an opportunity to speak at the public hearing, I would ask that you come forward, state your name, your address, and what you would like to share, and you will be limited to a two-minute period in which to, to speak. So, at this time, we'll introduce members of Crowe, and allow them to present their summary, so.
Thanks very much, members of council, mayor. My name's Jennifer Wilson, I was here about a month ago, and I gave this presentation to you. I'm going to briefly go through everyone in the public, and also understand why we're trying to... I'm going to briefly go through everyone from the public and also understand why we're trying to never having a water increase. And then after this public hearing, um, the water, then Janessa will be, uh, Janessa Carter will be presenting the sewer rate increase. So starting right in. There we go. We prepared a report, um, and that report was based on, uh, showed 2021 through 2023. We made adjustments to it for what we saw happening 2024. And for together, it includes operating expenses, taxes, uh, your debt payment, and then, uh, your operating fund needed to be balanced, needed to be built up, which I'll get to explain later, why it depleted somewhat. And also making ongoing capital expenditures through the extensions and replacements. You have a 4.4 million dollar capital improvement plan. And what the goal is, this, uh, report is to provide funding for that over a five-year, actually it's gonna be a little bit longer than a five-year period in order to fund those capital improvements. Your operation and maintenance fund was at a very healthy balance a couple of years ago. But as I will explain, it is now into a level that is below, uh, what's required in your bond ordinance. When you sold the bonds, you, uh, agreed to have two months' worth of operation and maintenance expenses. And as of the end of the year, uh, 12/31/23, it was below that required level. So we're gonna need to build that up within this rate increase. We are showing a two-phase rate increase. The first phase would be effective immediately since the water utility is, uh, continuing to lose money in the year of 2024. And then the second rate increase will be effective January 1st, 2026, so that you can phase into the full amount. Looking at your debt service, that's what this graph is showing, is that you have three bonds outstanding. You have the 2017 bond, 2017 bond, 2018 bond, and 2020 bond. And your debt service is pretty level for until the, until the year of 2037 at $1,353,000. This is the really telling, uh, slide for you. In 2021, your revenue was 3.5 million and your expenses were 3,31 million. So you had $400,000 to spend on ongoing capital. And, and let me take a step back. That's expenses considered, operation and maintenance and your debt service. In 2021, dairy farmer, or in 2022, dairy farmers, uh, closed up business. And so you lost $100,000 of revenue in 2022. And also funding decreased their usage by about $300,000 over the next two years. So that's why you can see that the blue line, which is your revenue line, went from 3.5 in 2021, down to 3.1 in 2022, and down to $3,25,000 in 2023. But your expenses continue to go up. So in 2021, it was 3.1, it increased closer to 3.2, and most of that was chemicals and employee benefits, um, in 2022. And then your chemicals expenses increased dramatically in the year 2023 by over $200,000. So you can see in 2023, your expenses are greater than your revenue. You had a healthy fund balance in your operating funds and you've been able to take in this operating loss, basically. But the time has come where you're not able to do that anymore, thus the rate increases. We made some adjustments for 2024, but we did not see there was a significant increase for, uh, budgeted 2024 over 2023. Uh, sorry, I do need to go back, um, to mention that you do have IO properties coming in. And so we did make the adjustment for their additional revenue that almost meets what dairy farmers used to bring in for you and the water you chose. So in overall, your revenue requirement is $4.4 million. You're currently bringing in $30.1 million, so we have a deficit of $1,312,000. We're going to have phase one increase of 28%, which will bring on an additional $830,000. But they'll only fund half of your capital improvement plan, about $420,000 per year. And phase two, we increase the operation and maintenance a little bit and also fund that second half of that extensions and replacements. So that phase, rate, phase two increase is 12%. So overall, it's a 43% rate increase over a year and a half, or a year and three months. What does that mean to your typical, typical monthly bill for inside customers? A minimum user is gonna see an $8 charge increase, starting immediately after passage. And then it'll increase another $4.40 on January 1st, 2026. A typical user of 600, 600 cubic feet will see a $12.42 increase immediately. And then another $6.83 in, uh, January of 2026. The outside city customers have a 30% surcharge. And so they'll see a $10 increase immediately and then additional $6, or $5.58 increase in January of 2026. We did a rate survey to compare you to other municipalities around, uh, the Decatur area. You guys do have a higher water charge in comparison to them. You're already in the top third. By the end of this increase in, in 2026, you will be the highest, uh, highest provider. But other of those communities are also having rate increases. I think we noted Burn also passed one, a rate increase in, uh, just last month, and so is, uh, South of Monroe. So I will end there and open up for any questions from the council.
At this time, we would invite members of the public who wish to speak, um, regarding the.
Water.
The water rate, um, proposed increases. Is there anyone who wishes to, to come forward and, and address the council? Is there anyone who wants to speak? Um, if you just. Yeah, right.
Just give your name and your address.
My name is Greg. My address is 110 West Detroit. So I guess if the rate would have been Burn and Monroe, what is that rate?
For Burn and Monroe? Um, I was not able to replicate their actual past rate ordinance on Burn's website. But I did note that it was in the newspapers that it was supposed to increase. So, um, I have not incorporated with their new rate into the rate survey.
So we don't know. So it feels like, um, in the Oakwood condition, it feels like we're kinda getting the, uh.
Well, I wanna clarify something. This is water. This isn't sewer. You don't, you don't have city water. That's, that'll be the next public meeting, which is coming up here in about five minutes.
I got a little ahead.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the, the proposed water rate changes? All right. Seeing no one come forward, this would conclude the public hearing related to the water rate, uh, or proposed amendments to water rates for the city of Decatur. We are already in, um, kind of a suspended state for the council. So we can enter into the second public hearing relating, um, to proposed sewer rate charges and amendments to the sewer rate. So. Go ahead and turn it over to you, Janessa.
Thank you very much.
Let you provide that summary.
Um, so go ahead and head to kind of, uh, readdress everything we talked about in section number two for our sewer rate study. Similar, oh. Oh, no, sorry. Oh. Sorry. Okay, thank you. Technology, sorry everyone. Uh, so similar to the water rate study, um, kind of the building blocks of how we put together the sewer rate study are very similar. So we looked at that historical financial analysis from 2021 to 2023. Uh, we made any known adjustments for how we, operations taking place here in 2024 and any known measurable changes. Uh, and that kind of derives at that revenue requirement, which is that overall operation and maintenance expenses and taxes, the debt service, and then also that extensions and replacements, which is really your cash capital investment into the system. So the key considerations for this rate study are also a two-phase rate increase. Uh, so looking at the sewer study, there is a 130% recommended coverage for your debt service on your current outstanding debt. Um, at this time, we're not needing that, um, without this rate increase. So with the first phase, this, the first phase rate increase will restore that coverage, um, and help build up the capital that we can invest in with cash as well. Uh, we'll talk about this a little bit more on the balance sheet highlights as well, but there's $9 million of outstanding debt that we need to be able to adequately provide coverage for. Uh, and then the second part of this is also the buildup of that extensions and replacements. Um, on the sewer side, we isolated the extensions and replacements annually at the annual depreciation expense. So for the phase one increase, uh, which will take place January 1st of 2025, that helps get us to about half of what that annual depreciation is, uh, for investments in cash capital, uh, which is about $383,000. Uh, that phase two increase, which is going to take place January 1 of 2026, will help fully fund that cash capital of the full annual depreciation from 2023 of about $757,000. Some of those balance sheet highlights that we talked about, um, the total current outstanding debt for Decatur Sewer is about $9 million. That's $6 million on the 2015 bonds and then $3 million on the 2019 funding bond. One, looking at this rate study, one thing that did help temper rates a little bit was the recent final payoff on the 2015 funding bonds. And that took place this last January of 24. Um, otherwise, the annual debt payments do remain steady for about 12 more years until 2035. So once again, this is kind of the key bread and butter of this rate study this chart is. So if you look at that blue, uh, bar graph, you'll see the operating revenues for this system. You can see that operating revenues exceeded the yellow chart in only 2021 as well. Very similar statements to what we talked about on the water side. That would do to that land of sun dairies loss as a customer in November of 2021. Similarly, again, you can also see that the expenses on the, the yellow bar chart had also increased over that time as well, which really left only a, you know, amount available for cash capital in 2021 only, and that was about $61,000. Um, we know that cash capital investment continued to happen in the system because our operating fund balance in 2021 was at a healthy $1.6 million. It's since fallen down to $432,000. At this point in time, it is in compliance, uh, with that two-month of minimum expenses. However, it continues on this trajectory, it's gonna run into the same problem that the water system has had right now as well, where you actually have to build that fund back up. Speaking of debt service, very quickly, one of the main drivers in this rate study was because that debt service coverage is below 130%. Uh, again, that's another bond ordinance requirement. So in 2021, if you look at the, uh, continuing disclosure requirement of calculating the debt coverage with the groundwater system, that debt coverage was 138%. Since then, in 2023, that fell, fell to 130%. Um, if you isolate sewer only, the debt coverage was only 106% back in 2021. And it's fallen down, down to 79% now in 2023, which is significantly lower than that 130% required. Current and adjusted operating expenses, you can see with the two tests here on the left side and then the, uh, adjustment on the right side, there's very minimal changes between the two. One known measurable change that we did make though, again, just like the water system, we did do estimate of an additional revenue from that additional customer IO properties, again, here on the system too. So what does that mean for your total revenue requirements? That calculates, uh, to about $3.4 million. Um, your current operating revenue is only about $2.7 million. So that leaves a deficit of about $669,000 per year. So with that, we're recommending a two-phase rate increase like we talked about. That would include a 10% rate increase January 1st of 2025. That differs slightly from water with the water system. We did propose an immediate phase one, whereas with the sewer system, the phase one would start until this coming January. That 10% will make up about $241,000 and help get you to that 130% coverage as well as partial cash capital that we can put into investments as well. The phase two would be about 14%, and that is January 1st, 2026. And that would make up the remaining deficit to get everything in compliance and towards on that cash capital. Cumulatively, that's about a 25% rate increase between the two. Uh, one thing to note here is that inflation since 2015, which was the last rate increase, was about 34.6%. So it is trending below inflation by almost 9% as well. So similar to the water system, just talking about what does this mean for the typical monthly user? If you look at that average of about 600 cubic feet, that first phase rate increase will result in a $4.58 increase for our monthly users inside the city. Then accumulatively, after both phases, it would be about $11.88 of that 600 cubic feet. For our outside city customers, at the 600 cubic feet level, that would be about $2, excuse me, $7.2 increase after that phase one. And then cumulatively, about $17.81 per month increase as well. Looking at that rate survey that we talked about, um, again, on the sewer side here, the gear is currently about 50th percentile. And after the phase one, it would be about 50th percentile. After the phase two rate increase, they'd be about 62nd percentile when benchmarking against other communities. I think it is a very, very good, um, figure that Jennifer had mentioned before on a keynote here. A lot of our communities that we're benchmarking against, they're in the process of rate increases and rate review as well. So looking at a phase two all the way out until 2026, at this time, with their current rate, we're at that 62nd percentile. But if they do a rate adjustment during that time period, it'd probably be even closer to our 50th percentile, I would say, as well. Have you taken any questions here?
One question I have is, surveying the audience, a lot of the folks here are out-of-city sewer customers.
No, wait, Matt. I would like her to clarify. An out-of-city sewer customer is someone that gets, pays the city water bill. There is a difference between an out-of-city customer and a. Regional sewer district customer. There's two different customers.
Okay.
We charge customers that are out of the city limit that have been tied into our system before the regional sewer district. So there are two different types of customers. What she's applying to is the out-of-city customer that pays the city utility themselves. We bill them, they pay us.
And the relationship the city has with the regional sewer district is a contractual relationship where the regional sewer district is actually the customer of the city. And then the district has its own set of customers that pay, that are billed on a monthly basis. And then those customers, um, or those residents are actually customers of the district. The district then sends their product for, for treatment to the city.
They send it to the city at a discounted bulk rate.
So, so to clarify, on an average month to the sewer district, that first increase in January will be about $2.30 on an average month. And the next one would be like $3.50 the following year. The increase from the city of Decatur to the sewer district. Because it's only, it's only the treatment cost that is gonna give the percentage rate increase to. Because the regional sewer district is actually a customer of ours and that's who we're billing. So it's basically, the highest month ever, it would have been a $2.50 increase.
And the numbers you just seen on that report is what the city residents of Decatur will be paying as an increase?
And those are higher.
Considerably higher.
Um, at, at this time, we are still in the public hearing. So if there's anyone from the public that would like to come forward and, uh, make a statement, you can do so. Yeah, please state your name and address.
My name is Colin Hershey. I live at Oakwoods, 3376.
Okay.
So basically, you're saying because we're part of the regional sewer district, that our bill will only be raised to the district by a certain amount?
No, I'm saying what we're going to bill them.
Right.
Will only go up $2.30 on average.
So that shouldn't increase our sewage bill by the same number as it should up here.
That's a question that would need to be asked for the district.
Yep, that's a question for them.
Okay, that's what I wanted to verify.
Okay.
Because we can only affect the treatment costs, and right now it's about 25% of your bill.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Does anyone else wish to speak? All right. Seeing no one else come forward or hearing no one else, okay.
Look, a couple slides back. I mean, there was never really any clear explanation on what my granny charity, 230 left, 850 north to here. Our rates, I thought, were saying that we're going to go up like 25%, 10% this January, and then next January, another 14%.
Right.
So we have to pay the last bill. It was never mentioned by anyone.
Right, but we just clarified that the only thing we're affecting is your treatment cost of that bill.
You can't answer any more questions?
Nope. We're only gonna, I can answer for you, I just told you. We're gonna, you're gonna get 10% on the treatment, was that?
You're at the wrong meet, you're at the wrong meeting, sir.
The treatment cost.
But how does that affect our bill?
That's up to the.
The highest, the highest we have charged in the whole time it's been there is 20, it's an average of about $25 a customer. That's the highest bill that has had been sent to the regional sewer district, 10% to $2.50. That's the highest month. On average, it would be about $2.30.
I had a report that it's going to go up 10% and then 15%.
The city rate to the sewer district is going up that much?
So that would affect our bill at $93, 10% would be $9, and the 15%.
Of the $93, of the $93, only 25% of it is what we collect.
We don't, we don't, we don't set your $93 rate. That's the regional sewer district that sets that rate, has nothing to do with us. This is not the meeting.
My next question was, you guys are with who? Crowe. Are you guys the ones that didn't figure in six years ago when we first started this, on how much money was needed and how much we had to borrow?
This is not, you're in the wrong meeting.
This is the wrong meeting.
You're in the wrong meeting. And when you ask questions, it's us.
Okay, is this the thing group that?
I have no idea who, I have no idea who worked with the regional sewer district as their financial advisor. This is our financial advisor. That question would be a great one to ask the regional sewer district, not the city.
So this group has decided that we need a 10% and a 15% rate.
The city does, the city does. Because we're losing money.
Do they make the same estimation?
They don't, I don't.
We have not been employed by.
Their track record, are they making the same mistake? Are they gonna lead us to the wrong answer?
They're not, you can't come and insult them because you don't know what you're talking about. They were not the financial advisor for that. There you go. Answered your question.
Who was?
I have no idea. Ask the sewer district.
No, 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 to the city.
Crowe, when we do our rate studies, Crowe has been.
That's all right. Sure. Who does regulate the sewer district? I know that you keep saying that there's somebody that regulates them. Who is that?
I wouldn't say regulate, they have a financial advisor that tells them what their rate is.
There's a board.
There's a board that runs the.
Sewer district board.
How often do they meet?
Monthly.
Monthly?
I'm pretty sure.
We'll reach out to them. Yeah, that's interesting. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like an opportunity to speak during the public Seeing no one else. This will conclude the sewer rate public hearing in the city of Decatur. So we entertain a motion to re-enter the city council meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we want to get right into the ordinance readings.
We can move on to the salaries.
You want to do those? You just want to do those. But, yeah.
Yeah, you want to pass this back?
Oh, yeah. We're just, yeah, we just want to go down to the rest for 13. Oh, oh, if you don't need those.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
We have other discussions outside. Could you guys, would you guys mind continuing the conversation outside? We just still have to finish this meeting. We still have a full meeting.
Mr. Mayor, could I suggest something to you?
Not, not outside the public hearing.
No, I've been doing it for years. Turn your volume so people can hear you.
Sure.
I can see your mouth moving, but I can't hear a word. Second, I'm.
Okay, Jim. If you want to call tomorrow, I can explain everything else that if you want.
All right.
I'll just ask you. I can joust the street.
Put that.
Well, if you joust the street or the coffee shop, then you can joust the quicker one.
Wherever you want, Jim.
Do we have a number of ordinances that are up for final reading?
Which one would you like to read first?
Let's start with water rates, 2024-13.
2013. Motion to adopt. I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-13 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance number 2024-13, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes amended rates and charges for the use, for the use of and the service rendered by the Decatur water system. I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-13 on its final reading.
Second. Motion to second, roll call vote?
Jane Bowers-Schultze.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Ford.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Motion carries. So now we have 2024-14, which is sewer rates. I need a motion to.
Introduce.
Introduce.
I move to introduce ordinance 2024-14 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance 2024-14, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, which amends rates and charges within the city sewer use ordinance, chapter 54, section 54.177 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, is supplemented. I move to adopt ordinance 2024-14 on its final reading.
Second. Motion to second, roll call vote?
Jane Bowers-Schultze.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Ford.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, let's stick with ordinances.
Employee salaries.
2024-15, employees' dollars. Thank you.
I move to introduce ordinance 2024-15 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance number 2024-15, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for employees of the city of Decatur, Indiana, for the year 2025. I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-15 on its final reading.
Second. Motion to second, roll call vote?
Jane Bowers-Schultze.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Ford.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Okay, we'll go to 2024-16, elected officials.
I move to introduce ordinance 2024-16 on a third reading by short title only.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance number 2024-16, an ordinance establishing the salaries to be paid to the elected officials of the city of Decatur, Indiana, for the year 2025. I move to adopt ordinance 2024-16 on its final reading.
Second. Motion to second, roll call vote?
Jane Bowers-Schultze.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Ford.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
We do have another ordinance that's on its first reading. This one has to do with multiple forms of payments for donations. I think what's happened, I've seen it all across the state, Walmarts for their donations are making you open up like a PayPal or some kind of account, and that's the only way they'll donate. And I know like the fire department gets an annual donation from Walmart for smoke detectors, is that right? Okay. This was kind of enough for all across the state right away, because they basically said, we'll only donate if you have a, I think it has to be PayPal, doesn't it?
Walmart, PayPal.
PayPal, so we have to set up these accounts in order to be able to take donations from Walmart or places that require that.
So Kevin did some background and checking with the state board of accounts, and there are some protocols that need to be filed. This is, if we establish an account like PayPal or Venmo, it's for collection, receiving, and depositing funds. Basically, depositing means you can transfer it from the PayPal or that form of financial instrument into the city's financial account, not a payment form or function that the city can utilize. So it's more of a collection site than, than anything else, that gives us the opportunity to qualify for those grant funds. Oh, the salaries, those are, those may just be 15 and 16, may just be the mayor and, well. So this is ordinance 2024-17, and we entertain a motion for introduction on a first reading by short title only. So move.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance 2024-17, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which authorizes use of PayPals, Venmo, and like financial instruments for collection or seeding into positive municipal funds. I make a motion to pass ordinance 2024-17 on its first reading.
Second. Motion to second, roll call vote?
Jane Bowers-Schultze.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Ford.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Yes.
I make a motion to place ordinance 2024-17 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance 2024-17, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which authorizes use of PayPal, Venmo, and like financial instruments for collection, receipting, and depositing municipal funds. I move to pass ordinance 2024-17 on its second reading.
Second. Motion to second, roll call vote?
Jane Bowers-Schultze.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Ford.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Yes.
I move to table ordinance 2024.
Can we pass it on three?
Oh, okay. Suspend, okay. I move to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2024-17 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance 2024-17, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which authorizes use of PayPal, Venmo, and like financial instruments for collection or seeding into positive municipal funds. I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-17 on its final reading.
Second. Motion to second, roll call vote?
Jane Bowers-Schultze.
Yes.
Excuse me, Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Ford.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Okay, motion carries.
I don't know if you, uh, I don't know if you.
Did he make?
Make a request? I don't think he made it. I don't know if he made it. We didn't know. I guess in the next couple weeks, maybe. So. Dan, did you pass the in the town park spot off the 3224, they did it all three weeks?
What's it?
I don't know if we had an ordinance that before. I don't know if we had one.
I thought we.
We did not have, did we?
Uh-uh.
No, we just, they approved to.
They approved it, they know, okay.
Haven't changed ordinance yet.
To amend the ordinance to, to put that in the right.
My bad.
No, I'm fine. For someone who's had it on. You drafted it when passing.
No, the last one was just approving to move forward with it, yeah. Thank you. So Kevin wanted to bring up that you guys need to make redevelopment commission appointments. Yeah, I mean, I know, and you guys have sent some emails back and forth.
Yeah, how do we do that? I just, they were recommending.
The only, the only first evidence.
Well, I'll give a little backstory maybe of like Jason Byrd doesn't want to be on the committee anymore, and so he's really the one that we need to find a replacement for. And then our appointment, Craig Russet, he chooses to remain. I had a long conversation with him. I think that he's still a great asset, and I would like to keep him on, so.
So I guess we, we want to make, they make a motion to keep, to, well, if that's a motion.
I don't know if there needs to be a motion.
I don't know.
I think it needs.
I think we've made a motion.
Like every year, make a new.
Okay. So if someone wants to make a motion to keep Craig Russet on there, that's fine, or if you want to make another motion, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yeah, motion to second to keep Craig Russet on redevelopment commission, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. And then, do you want to discuss the other, since Jason Byrd has asked to relieve his duties?
So I had two individuals to present. One is Carrie Graeblich, Graeblich. She owns Job Bean with her husband. I've always been impressed with her dedication and such to the city. The other is Aaron Reimer. He owns a trucking company with his brother, and I've known Aaron for years. He's probably one of the smartest guys I know, very innovative in his way of thinking, forward-thinking, kind of outside of the box thinking. Both individuals are forward thinkers, have big project management in owning their own businesses and such, working with budgets. I think either would be a great asset to our DC.
Matt, could you have anybody else in mind?
I did not have. I did not have anybody else in mind to recommend. I do have a preference in the two put forth by Abby, not that, there's not a place for many volunteers in different boards and certainly be considered for others, but I would, I would lean towards Aaron Reimer, having known him as well and seen his vision for.
Aaron is a very intelligent person. I could tell, I've worked with him for years.
So with, I don't have a problem with him either, so. I would make a motion to, to add Aaron to the redevelopment commission.
I would second it.
Motion to second, any more discussion?
He did say he was willing to be on redevelopment.
Yeah, I have spoken to both, sorry. I have spoken to both. They're both willing, if appointed. I can kill them.
Okay, motion to second for Aaron Reimer to be appointed to the redevelopment commission, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
But again, as we have other boards and other places to fill in, Carrie Graeblich, great. I think we should always be looking for new people that want to step into these roles, people that have been in the sidelines, kind of wanting to get into city government in one way or another, find places for them.
I agree. I would love to see, I've had a few people show some interest. Sometimes, again, a little time consuming, I mean, some of the meetings, I mean, I know John Schultz had his advisory committee at one time. I wouldn't mind having, seeing that come up again just to help prioritize things. I think that was a great idea when he did it 15 years ago or whatever it was when he first started it. I would definitely be open to doing that again.
I know there was someone that approached me about the park board years ago, someone in their 30s that's. in their 30s that's wanting to get involved and I think there's room for some in those demographics to get involved.
I agree. Is that the only appointment that you need from them right now?
I think that was the only two you guys council need to make, 25.
What happens next, like do I reach out to Aaron or do you?
If you want to, yeah.
You'll have to kind of come up and.
Yeah, I'll have some paperwork, get bonded.
Okay, but I can tell him?
You can let him know, yeah.
Why didn't you start as a.
January.
Do you want your appointment?
Wednesday, the first Wednesday of the month of 5.
First Wednesday, yeah.
Okay, do you have anything else? Andy, do you have anything else? Can't remember. Um, okay, Department heads, Jeremy. Kevin G.
Yeah. Great numbers for E.R. going out, thanks. We are down eight after this little show here. So, uh, we have been four groups, uh, go off, so.
Great, great. Jeff?
Our open house was a little less than people, the past one. Usually the helicopter comes in, it brings the people out, it didn't, but I would say we probably had about half of what we wanted to have.
Was that the same week as last year? Was it the same time?
It was a week later, it was fire prevention week, so a week later.
Okay.
Because.
Yeah, I know I.
Usually the first of the month we have, we always have during fires prevention.
Okay, all right. Yeah. Kurt?
Yeah.
Um, Carrie.
Is it stopping digging up?
I, we're getting older. I can't bully us. I have to think about a lot of things. Oh. Kurt, I would, you want to give a quick update about the work you've been doing with the skate park? And I know you're reaching out to some of the kids and.
Well, we're having an issue trying to get the kids to call in. Uh, we've got everything, Brad and I've got the ramps as far as we can get them. Uh, here on how this is a matter of moving them over to skateboard park and then assembling the bigger one.
Yeah.
Um, which is an effectable, but, uh, we just need some kids and skateboarders to reach out to us, see what they want to do, to screw it up.
Okay, I think, uh, I think people are going to be amazed with what's going to be out there. So. Anything from council?
I wish there was an easier way to convey to the public sometimes that these folks are out in the lobby angry that their rates are increased. They don't know who to blame or who.
Who to address it to.
To address it to. And I wish there were a way to better spell that out to them, because it is confusing, you know?
Oh, thank you.
Well, that doesn't help.
I think social media gives out too much wrong information and actually all they have to do is call, call or email. And they can figure the, out the correct information on a lot of things. I think we've seen that a couple weeks in a row now. A phone call or a visit, which takes a lot of things.
I will say it sounds like they're, um, it's simple, you just make us just talk a lot of silver.
Oh, it's kind of.
What?
I don't have it anymore. I can't explain it.
Anymore?
$3 of that bill is going up 10%. Well, it's only 2%. Now, the guy. Whoever that guy is working with. It was comical out there.
Uh, anything else from public? Yeah.
Hi, um, you might probably remember my daughter, Tori, she's on the city council a few years. Last time when we were here, I think it was late spring, within school year, um, I believe Tori and I had brought up that intersection there in front of Belmont, 224 Jackson going into Belmont, turns into North Garden Drive.
Major wreck this morning.
Yep, my son actually happened to come upon it and sent me a pretty good picture and it pretty much, I mean, I, I know I can speculate, um, but it looked like the, the one car was trying to go straight and a pickup truck trying to turn left out of the school and, and their front.
So, so actually, thank you for bringing that up. Jeremy and I have been working with USI on some safety, what do you want to call them? Jeremy's safety fixes out by the school?
HSIP funds.
Yeah, so there's some federal funds that's for, there's a quick call right now to try to get some easier things done. We tried to put that intersection into it, it's, that's too big of a project for this, but we are, hopefully if we receive the funding, we're going to see some improvements at the crosswalks, some raised crosswalks, maybe some lighting, some different things at the other ones. That one though, we are still working with USI to see if they can put it in for another federal. So we went to NDOT, Jeremy and I were in the dot, well, for something else, but we've been talking with them about that intersection. We all know it, we're trying to push, I actually, I met with the school superintendent about that intersection that she would, um, support anything that could be done out there.